Good evening. City Council Committee on Public Health Safety and Environment, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, met in the City Council Chamber on Wednesday, August 21st, 2024, at 6:00 PM, for the purpose of discussing the matters listed below. Notice of this meeting was posted on July 16th, 2024, at 10:31 AM. Absent from the Public Health Safety and Environment Committee, none, and attending from the Committee of the Whole, Councillors Merkel, Harvey, Davis, and Stott. Thank you all for being here. So I'll just do a general summary, which is that the ordinance proposed changes are to change from inspections by the Health Department to get a Certificate of Fitness from every time a tenancy changes to every three years, regardless of whether a tenancy has changed during that time period. And the other thing that we'll discuss is whether it's appropriate to have inspections when a housing authority or another entity is already doing an inspection or has done an inspection. And we'd like to start off, if it's okay with the health agent, to have the health agent, David Greenbaum, come up and talk about these things. Thank you.
Good evening, Councillors. Is that mic on? Is that on? Doesn't sound like it.
Try it again.
Is that on? Councillor, there you go. All right. So the proposed change is to remove language that speaks to owner-occupied two- and three-family homes in those units that are not occupied by the owner. So if it's a three-family and they live in one, those other two units would still be required to be inspected by the Health Department. It also talks about removing language for HUD inspections and Section 8 inspections. It's the belief of the Health Department that the intent of the ordinance was that those units would still be inspected on the 3-S cycle. And we think it's important that they are. We understand that, you know, Section 8 does do inspections annually, but we believe those inspections are separate and distinct. So we think that it's important that we get in there as well. We uncover different things that the Housing Authority may not find when they do their inspection. For instance, a couple of things we find is some illegal units. We find cross-wiring. We find cross-metering of electricity and gas and things like that. So we think that, you know, these changes are minor in nature, and I believe that they're necessary to get into some of these units that are inspected by Section 8 as well.
Thank you. If you could, you and I discussed when we met, the changes to your department, where because of the expanded number of people who are able to do inspections, if you could tell the council how that positively impacts, you know, quantities and ability to do inspections?
Sure. So through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, we were able to hire a person, a staff member, to focus on doing Certificate of Fitness inspections solely. They have started, they started in March. They have been sending out letters to notify landlords that they need to have their units inspected. They hadn't been inspected in the previous three years. They started with letters A through E in the alphabet, so they've only done those first five letters of the alphabet with streets, of those streets that have those units. They've increased participation of inspections 250% in that time over the previous year. So I think just having that one person doing that, it shows that the amount of units that need to be inspected is there. It justifies, in my opinion, the need to do the inspections. And, you know, in reality, we could probably use another two or three people to do the inspections. By the time we get through the entire alphabet, we'll probably have gone through the entire 3-S cycle already and have to start again.
Thank you. If you don't mind standing there, I'm gonna open it up to the council. Council Marcella.
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of questions. Do you know the history of the language that you're now omitting about owning the property and living on the property? Do you know the history of why that was like that? That it excluded two- and three-family properties that were owner-occupied?
So when the ordinance changed, I wasn't working for the city, so I don't know if that was new language or if it was in the original ordinance. I'm not sure.
I don't know the answer to that, but I could go back in the legislative history and take a look at that.
I just want to make it very transparent that I am an owner of a two-family, and I'm not opposed to it. I thought the inspection was very helpful. It did catch a few things in our unit. But I was just curious about why that was very explicitly written in there. But like I said, I think, I think any sort of a certificate of fitness not only protects the property owner, but it protects the tenant also, because you do go through and kind of, you have a picture in time of what the unit looks like, what any violations are, and that they are corrected before the certificate is given. And I did have questions about the double, the double inspection from HUD or the Section 8, and then as well as the local one. And the way it was explained to me by our housing specialist in the mayor's office was, it is, actually does provide protections for the tenant and the landlord, because the records are local. It's not always easy to get the records of an inspection from the state or the federal government, as we can all imagine. So, you know, in my mind, it is, it's cumbersome to make two dates for an inspection. It is cumbersome. People do lose work. It affects the tenants also, because they have to be ready. But I do think that it's helpful for both sides. I think it would, it would provide some support in both situations. And I think those are my only two questions, unless you, does the HUD and the Section 8 inspection, are they the same thing, first of all? When you talk about a HUD inspection, is it the same as a Section 8 or Housing Authority?
I believe this. I don't know if they're exactly the same, but I believe this.
Are they doing inspection based on federal guidelines or federal regulations?
Yes.
Okay. So there, there would be situations possibly where we would have different local specifications for a unit?
So our inspection is based off the Massachusetts State Sanitary Code. And it's, I mean, this is the sanitary code. It's pretty extensive, you know? That's what our inspection is based off of. You know, HUD, the HUD checklist is, is a little bit shorter. I mean, they do check for similar things, but it's a simple checklist. Our inspection report is computer-generated now. It's a, it's an automated system that we use. We can take pictures with it. Has all the code references assigned to it. So if need be, we can generate a report. A lot of times, we don't need to generate a report. The apartment inspection passes inspection on the first go-round. But our inspector does generate a report in our system that we have currently in Viewpoint Cloud. We have another inspection system platform that we're using in the Health Department called Housing Code Pro, that we can generate a really nice inspection report if need be. And then the other thing I just want to mention is, I did compare a, another local ordinance, the city of Lynn. Their ordinance, actually, the only exemption that they allow for is any federal, state, or city government property, the only exemptions. They don't have any exemption for HUD-inspected or Section 8-inspected properties. It's just if it's a federal, state, or city-owned property. Their fees are, you know, a little bit different than ours. They have to register their property annually. The first registration is $25, and then it's $15 a year after that. Their inspection fees are $100 for an inspection, and if you don't inspect, their penalties are way higher than ours. It's $300 a day, and ours is $50 a day. Our inspection fee is $50, and that's it.
So they exempt Housing Authority properties?
Housing Authority properties would be exempt, but not, not a private owner's property that has a Section 8 tenant.
Do we exempt Housing Authority?
Yes, we do.
We do?
Yep.
Why do we do that?
Because it's a, it's a city-owned property. It's a government-owned property. It's always been that way.
Okay. I mean, that seems like you're splitting hairs there, right? Like, on the one hand, you're saying that the HUD, the HUD inspection isn't as thorough for what we're looking for locally, but then we're exempting Housing Authority properties.
Housing Authority has, they have maintenance. They have, you know, staff that is in their buildings all the time. A private property owner may not have that. And, you know, even though they have a Section 8 tenant, it's still a privately-owned property. You know, that's why I don't think, you know, if you own a property and live in it, and I owned a multifamily home for years and lived in it, I didn't have to have my apartment inspected. But under this ordinance, I wouldn't have to have any of my apartments inspected. So I had to have my other two apartments inspected. It wasn't in this city, but it was in another community. But that's why I think if you are making money on an apartment, you should have those apartments inspected.
That's fair. My, my one last ask, and we've, I've said this before, I am never going to remember in three years to do this again.
Yeah.
So please, please do automatic reminders using the system.
The, the system has a shortcoming, and I, believe me, I am pushing Viewpoint Cloud to find a way to do this, so that we can get those automatic reminders out, because, in my opinion, it is a huge shortcoming in this, in the system, specifically for this purpose.
Thank you, Council Marcella. Before passing along to other councillors, I do want to mention that after I met with Mr. Greenbaum, I thought about my own property. I own or occupy a building, and I've had a few voucher tenants, Section 8. And when we were talking about the difference in inspections, I realized that, and for people in the public who don't know this, most vouchers travel with the tenant. Lee Fort Terrace, for example, are property-based, so those would stay at the property. But the tenants I had, one of, one of them, for example, had a Salem Housing Voucher, another one had an Ipswich Voucher, and the inspections were totally different. I'm not going to mention which community, but one inspection was basically someone walking around, looking around, saying, "Fine," and that was it. And then you get the paperwork, and you're done. And the other one was a little bit more extensive. I have participated in the Salem ones. And just to give an example, the difference, far more rigid than the ones I had from either the Housing Authorities, was that they checked, for example, whether the windows locked, whether the hot water heater was at the right temperature, you know, if, you know, CO2 and smoke detectors are in appropriate places and work. And, you know, if you failed any of those things, they give you, just like a car inspection, a certain amount of time where you can get it fixed, provide an affidavit, and get your Certificate of Fitness. So my, after speaking with Mr. Greenbaum, it really made me think about how important it is for us to make sure of the safety. And the people who are property owners who tend not to request Certificate of Fitness inspections are typically the ones who maybe don't have as safe a property as others. Councillor Harvey?
If I may, before, Council Harvey, the other thing that I should mention is, is that most, if not, many housing authorities require a valid Certificate of Fitness to maintain the Section 8 certificate. So since this went to three years, so this happened in 2018, I came back to the city in 2019. It was one of the things that I was tasked with starting. We all know what happened in 2020, '21, '22, '23. This just wasn't going to happen in those three years. In 2024, we were fortunate enough to get it going, and here we are. And this is part of the reason we're looking at this ordinance, trying to streamline it, make it a little bit more user-friendly, and, you know, get a lot of these apartments that haven't been inspected over the last five years, six years inspected.
Councillor Harvey?
Thank you, Chair. Quick question. I mean, it seems like we're talking about Section 8, but is this, to clarify, it's all units, not just units that accept Section 8, correct?
Correct.
So it's not just a matter of the Section 8 certificate units? It's a matter of all units that are multifamily? Obviously, like you said, the owner-occupied doesn't have to be inspected, but the other two also do?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Stott, and then Councillor Prozinski.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for holding space for this meeting. And I think I definitely learned a lot about the Certificate of Fitness. Thank you for answering all the questions. I had one clarification question based off of Council Marcella's questioning. Are we inspecting SHA units?
SHA-owned properties are exempt under the ordinance, because this owned by the city is my understanding. I don't know if you can clarify that.
So the, as currently written, you think they're exempt, and even with our edits, they would be exempt? I would feel with our edits, they would no longer be exempt, because we're removing the HUD inspection. I see the only exemption as any owner-occupied unit. So this could even be a single-family home that's rented out by somebody?
If you go to page two under exemptions.
Oh, okay.
There is a list of exemptions, and those would be the exemptions in the, in the ordinance.
What number is that?
It's a letter J on, on page two.
Okay. I thought I read that. So any property consisted of 100 or more rental units, so like the larger, okay.
I'll say those 100 or more unit, rental unit buildings, they all call and get certificates of fitness. They don't have any problem with it. They want to get those certificates.
Yeah, I could see that.
They, they want to know that if they have to go to court, to be honest.
Yeah.
They have proof that the apartment was inspected, and they can say to the judge that it was inspected, and it passed the Board of Health's inspection.
Okay. Thank you. That answered that. And then, Council Marcella asked a lot of the questions that I had, but I'm definitely curious with the tracking piece. I understand that you knew, and you have a new member doing this, and new tracking, and we need to be proactive, asking for these. I think we've learned from the past that the property owners are not necessarily going to be asking. So I just, it's, it's great to hear that that's in place. I'm wondering if there's any other additional tracking that you're doing above the Certificate of Fitness? This might go back to the funding of the position of the inspector through the Affordable Housing Trust Funds, like those that also do have SHA vouchers or SHA inspections. Are we adding that in, so we know that that's an affordable unit within the city? Are we including that really important data point that I think would be super helpful to have?
We hadn't thought of it, but we can certainly look at adding it in. It's not part of the application. I don't know that it would be appropriate to make it part of the application, but we can look at, to see if there isn't a way that we can look to see what it is. I, I think something to bear in mind is that if somebody has a Section 8 voucher, that doesn't mean a unit is affordable. It means that that person needs assistance with housing, and they're getting that through the Housing Authority. If they live in a Housing Authority building, then that, that unit may be affordable. As somebody who took Section 8 housing, I know, because most of the rent, if not all the rent, was paid through the Housing Authority, and it wasn't an affordable rent.
From the owner's perspective?
Yes.
I see what you're saying. But from the tenant's perspective, they're utilizing?
They're using, they're utilizing housing assistance. It doesn't make, it doesn't mean it's affordable. Yeah.
Smatics. Okay. I'm totally fine with adding the, the owner-occupied, owner-occupied buildings, all of those units except for those. I was definitely going back and forth on those that also have the HUD inspection, because I do feel like the onerous is, is a lot with it being every year, but hearing that they are different, and the different items and the protection for both, that leads me to just, I guess, my last question of, can a tenant call in and request a copy of the completed Certificate of Fitness?
Absolutely. And it's my understanding, then the ordinance, that the landlord is supposed to provide them a copy of the Certificate of Fitness. But absolutely, it's a public record, so anybody can request.
Anybody can. Okay. Thanks, that's all.
David, I'm getting the impression that our inspections, the city go far above and beyond what the other inspectional services are providing. Seeing that we're generating a report and providing, having a record of that report, I'm looking at it from the property owner's viewpoint. Can our report be accepted by someone like HUD, and their inspection be waived, because our inspection goes far above and beyond theirs? Would they accept our report and take the onerous off of the, the property owner?
I think that's a question for the Housing Authority, but having spoken to them, I don't think so, because they're required by HUD to do certain inspections. You know, they're required to inspect those units every year by HUD. So I don't think so, but I think it's a question for the Housing Authority, unless, Beth, you want to weigh in?
Don't know. Not the hope of.
I've spoken to the executive director of the Housing Authority, and she's told me that they are required, under HUD rules and regulations, to inspect their Section 8 units annually. So I don't know if our inspection could, you know, be utilized for that purpose or not, but...
It just seems common sense that anybody from HUD knows that Salem is doing an inspection. That's far above and beyond and better than theirs, for them to come in and do their own inspection, which is not nearly as covering as ours.
I don't want to.
Seems to be an onerous, seems to be unreasonable.
I don't want to say it's not as good as ours. I just, I think that ours covers a little bit more than the Housing Authority does, and, you know, but...
And my hat's off to you, because I think it's very important that the people in Salem know that we're going above and beyond, and we're providing them a better place, providing them a better quality of life, for both the tenants and protecting the property owners and the landlords themselves. So that's all for pushing this forward. I just, I just, I just understand from a property owner's point of view is, is, why am I going through this again and again and again, as it seems to be covering it all? But I understand. Thank you.
I will open it up to any other, Councillor Harvey?
Thank you, Chair. I guess in, jumping on to what Conrad was just talking about, if a landlord knows that HUD is coming on a certain day, and they, could they call your office and request their inspection be on that same day, so that they're not having to juggle it?
They certainly, they certainly could, yes. And we would do our best to accommodate that as well.
All right. Just throwing that out there, so it kind of alleviates some of the burden of, if you want to call it that. Thank you.
I will open up the public comment, but I just wanted to make a couple of comments to Council Prozinski's point. I do believe in a conversation I had with Salem Housing that, as part of their funding process, they have to submit records of when they've done inspections, when they've done it signed by, I believe, a Housing Authority person. The other thing is to Council Stott's point, and I'm not sure, like, how you would know if someone is, do you know if someone has a voucher or not, before you go there? And I don't know if maybe the tenant would want people to know if they have a voucher.
We generally don't know unless, when the landlord calls, they tell us that it's for a Section 8 voucher, and they need it as soon as possible. That's generally how we find out it's for a Section 8, but...
But I know in the case of my house, I'm not sure that the tenants that I had would want people to know, you know?
The volume has increased so dramatically over the last five months that, you know, we're out probably six or eight weeks on inspection scheduling. But if somebody calls and they need it, you know, as soon as possible, we try to accommodate as best we can.
Councillor Merkel?
Thank you, Chair Cohen. Now, being a member of committee, and I just want to support the point that you just made, since you had mentioned that these are public records, that any information of that nature, I would think, you know, unless there was a legal requirement, shouldn't be listed on, on anything that's a public record. I see that as, as somebody's, somebody's private business. And also, I want to thank, I do support this. I did understand the concerns at first of making, you know, two burdens, but I appreciate not only the thoroughness of your inspections, but that we have the records available to the city, instead of trying to track something down with HUD. Thank you.
Just to be clear, we would never put somebody's rental information on our certificate or on our applications. We, you know, that would, if we were to keep track of that somehow, it would be in a database somewhere, but I would not put out as public record if possible, but, but it wouldn't be part of the application or part of the Certificate of Fitness.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, we'll open up to public comment. If there is anyone, please step up to the podium, and it's up to you if you want to say your name and address. And please speak right into the microphone. Eat the microphone. Yep.
I will do what I can. Just wanted to thank you all for having me tonight. I guess I'm representing all the landlords in the city of Salem who are not here with me. Anyway, my name is Tom McDonald. I've been a landlord in the city of Salem for 42 years. And I'm just going to read what, oh, actually, first I'll address a couple little things. HUD is a federal program, and the US government is not going to make an exception for the city of Salem Board of Health, as far as submitting the, the city inspections in place of it. Also, too, the, the Board of Health inspectors, they are not licensed electricians or plumbers, and therefore, they would only know if something's cross-metered, or if there's an illegal, actually, they wouldn't notice, they wouldn't know, they wouldn't know if something was cross-metered with electricity or with the plumbing, unless the tenant actually spoke to them and said, "No, I think there's a problem." And that would be done with either the city of Salem inspector or the Board of Health inspector. I'm just going to read what I have, if you wouldn't mind. See, regarding the city ordinance, Section 2, 705, Certificate of Fitness, regarding the required inspection every three years by the Board of Health, it is clearly stated in paragraph one that apartments passed in a HUD inspection are exempt from the additional Board of Health Department inspection. Yet, when speaking with Mr. Greenbaum and others at the Salem Board of Health Department, I was told that this was not the case, and that my previously HUD-inspected units must be inspected again by them with the $50 fee per unit. The Section 8 program is a federally-funded program administered by HUD, and by definition qualifies for this exemption, which has been unfortunately ignored. With a yearly inspection from the Section 8 inspectors, plus an additional Board of Health inspection every three years, this would yield an inspection for each apartment every nine months, which I feel is a unnecessary burden. Excuse me. Let's see. As a mid-sized landlord for over 42 years, I feel that it's going to, feels, I'm sorry, I just lost my little, my place here. I think it's going to cause more landlords from not renting to people with Section 8 vouchers, and which would create a shortage of affordable housing units within the city. Recently, I was speaking with another mid-sized landlord, and after explaining my plight, he said, "Well, that's why I don't rent to people in Section 8." I've also been told that the Board of Health looks for different things than the Section 8 inspectors. But to be clear, all the Section 8 inspectors, and all the Section 8 inspectors are looking for the, the same issues regarding health, safety, and fire, that would affect the occupants in the, the building, and, as well as the tenants. So they're basically, they're all looking for the, the same thing. For, for Section 8 tenants, anything that's of an immediate danger, health, fire, safety, smoke detectors... smoke detectors, these failures must be corrected within 24 hours. These rest of the failed items, you have 30 days in which they can be corrected before the unit itself and the common areas are re-inspected. If the violations are not corrected by this time, the landlord is not paid and the rent is not reimbursed. So just to give you an example of what Salem Housing does, and I also, I deal with a whole bunch of, I deal with Boston Housing, Gloucester Housing, Beverly Housing, Cambridge Housing, Salem Housing, TBID Housing, CTI at a level. And basically, you know, their inspectors, they're all, they're required by HUD, they have a guideline that they follow. It's not just willy-nilly. In speaking with Jackie Guzman at the Salem Housing Authority, she sent me the information that they go by. It's 30 pages long. It's just like the book Mr. Greenbaum has also. So the last inspection that I had done by Salem Housing, see, for this particular building, I'm renovating the first floor, and work was being done on the house. So I don't think, and the inspector didn't know this, so I don't want you thinking I'm a slumlord. So what they do is they inspect the unit, they send the landlord the list of the complaints. You have 30 days to do it unless it's, you know, for health and safety and fire. So for me, please be advised that these items have failed. Sometimes it's small stuff, sometimes it's bigger stuff. So for this particular one, they wanted some light bulbs changed in the kitchen on the vents. There was some gaps around the pipes under the sink because I was changing up all the plumbing and the electrical for that particular unit also. So the inspector found gaps around the pipes. He also found what he's calling excessive mold on the ceiling. It has a drop ceiling. Wants one of the ceiling tiles replaced. The bathroom ventilator was, got caked up, so that needed to be switched out. He wanted the water stains on the walls taken care of. He wanted it cleaned, sanitized, and repainted. He wants one of the vents cleared. The tenants moved a couple of the light lube's for a couple of the bedrooms. They wanted those replaced. They wanted, there was some missing siding. Again, I was working on the building. He was looking for the siding to be replaced, and he found some things around the, some stuff around the hot water heater that was too close, in his opinion, that he wanted moved. So for this, I had 30 days to take care of it. After 42 years of dealing with all the different building inspectors, not building inspectors, but all the housing inspectors and the Board of Health, I haven't noticed any difference between a Salem Housing inspection or any other HUD inspectors versus the city of Salem, with the exception of taking the temperature of the water. So anyway, being a landlord and dealing with tenants, it's hard enough. So to this end, I would ask the Board of Health to adhere to the original city ordinance and not veer from it, from its own accord. But obviously, we've gone beyond that now, and it looks like, yeah, so that's basically it. So in other words, every unit would be inspected every nine months. I think that's a burden on the landlord. If you have any questions regarding the Section 8 program, it's a federally funded program. The tenants can move to Florida, they can move from state to state, they take the voucher with them typically. Sometimes it's held by the housing agencies. There's different rules and regulations. The tenants pay 30% of their adjusted gross income. So for low-income tenants, if they're making minimum wage, you know, their portion of the rent is reflected with it. So regardless of what the landlord gets, this helps the tenant greatly. So in other words, if they're only taking in $1,000, now they're going to be paying $300 towards the rent, otherwise they're going to be homeless. So the more burdens that are placed on the landlords, the more you run the risk of losing affordable housing within the city. So something to think about. You can also speak with Jackie Guzman at the Salem Housing Authority if you have any questions about the inspectors. They're all, they all follow strict, sorry, I've got a crazy hearing problem. When I speak, I'm screaming into my ear. If you have any questions, please call Jackie. She's very pleasant to deal with. Shoot her an email. She can answer any of your questions. That's it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Appreciate the testimony. We're going to open it back up to the council. Councilor Jerslow.
Thank you, Chair. Just a question, does it cost to have a Section 8 housing inspection? Does it cost the landlord? Is there a cost to it?
I do want to mention something before we proceed. I was asked by the city clerk if we wanted to have this referred to the meeting, the special meeting tomorrow, and I am just letting the council know I made an executive decision not to because the first time this was in front of the council, we had public testimony both by email and in person. And by having whatever we decide tonight referred, if we decide to do that, to the full council, it will be at the first meeting in September. And that will enable people from the public to weigh in if they so choose. So I hope it's okay with the council that I made that decision, but didn't have a lot of notice to decide. So it's literally like right before the revised agenda. Councilor Murcillo.
Thank you, Chair. I move that we refer this to the council with a positive recommendation for first passage.
Councilor Murcillo moves that we refer this to the full council with a positive Councilor Watsonfeld seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, that would be five members of the committee in favor and none opposed. And just so the public knows, this will now go to the full council. We will describe what happened tonight, and then people will be able to comment, and it will require two votes. I will accept another, oh. Oh, you can, yeah, Council Watsonfeld.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor? Thank you, everyone.